We'll call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commit? Yes. Commissioner Garretson?
Here.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leone?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded? Vice Chair Hudak?
Present.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have seven Commissioners present?
Thank you. If you would now lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and a lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union wishes to announce that pursuant to requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this--
Isn't she messy?
I'm sorry. My apologies. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. So we'll begin by asking County Clerk Rajapi to please present her resolution.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the Office of the County Clerk just has one resolution this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I'll look to my left and then to my right. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will ask-- I will ask Assistant-- First Assistant Prosecutor Tanzi to please come and present resolutions on behalf of the Office of the County Prosecutor.
Yes, Madam Chair. This evening, we have four items on the agenda, and I'd be happy to take any questions related to them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, no questions? Thanks so much. All righty. Okay. And next, we have the Board of Elections. If Administrator Dorado would come up and present her resolution?
Good evening, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of Elections has one resolution on this evening's agenda for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, colleagues? No questions? Thank you, Ms. Dorado.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Next, we will have Joseph Graziano from the Department of Engineering. Please present your resolutions.
Good evening, Chair Williams. Commissioners, I have five resolutions on tonight for your consideration, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Thanks so much. Any questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Let's see. Let's see. Debbie Ann Anderson, Director of the Department of Human Services, would you please present your resolutions?
Good evening, Chair members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has three resolutions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for the Department of Human Services? Okay. No questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, the Department of Parks and Recreation, Ron Zuber, Director. Would you please present your resolutions?
Good evening, Chair. Department of Parks and Recreation has two items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Just one note. It appears that there's a misplaced comma in Resolution 1. I'm assuming that's $12,500, not $125,000? And Resolution 1, in the amount not to exceed-- if you see the number there--
It's on my-- I didn't bring the printed agenda here, but I have $125,000.
Okay. All right. So, okay, Clerk will make a note. Yeah, that's a big difference.
Sorry about that.
All right. And there are no questions on the other resolution. So Clerk, just make a note of that. Thank you.
Chair, I've made the note that the amount of that resolution is an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And in place of Public Safety Director Moran, we'll have the County Manager, Ed Oatman, speak on that resolution.
Fortunately, Director Moran cannot be here tonight. I will do my best to fill in, and the Department of Public Safety has four items on tonight's agenda, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, there are no questions. Thank you so much, County Manager.
Thank you, Chair.
And Office of County Council-- County Council Bergen, would you please present your resolutions?
Thank you, Chair. Office of the County Council has three resolutions tonight. They're all yearly standard resolutions, but I'll be happy to answer any questions there might be.
Okay. Any questions on these resolutions? No questions?
Madam Chair, just--
Yes?
I just have one question for the County Council. So, in Number 2, it's about publishing and law books. Is that something that's in hard copy, or can all that information be gathered kind of electronically?
Almost all of it is electronic. There are certain items that we do get in hard copy, but for the most part, case law-- or res-- I'm sorry-- statutes and so on are electronic. We get some of the more local stuff in hard copy just because it's easier to grab when you need it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none? Okay. We'll close that portion. And now, we have Commissioner-sponsored resolutions. Any comments on the Commissioner-sponsored resolutions? Okay. Seeing none? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we'll now have a five-minute break just before entering our regular session. Thank you. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garretson?
Here.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leone?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded? Vice Chair Hudak?
Present.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have seven Commissioners present for the regular meeting?
Thank you. Would you please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and a lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved. Second.
I think that was Commissioner Garretson, moving and seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Okay. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leone?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on the communication?
Thank you so much. This meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Please kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution that is on our agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring, and adhere to the five-minute time limit. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Williams, Dr. Garretson, and the new Commissioner, Mr. Baker. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Just welcome back. I'm sorry I didn't attend the swearing-in in the pomp and circumstance. I always try to, but it was a conflict with the Garwood one. Just, I guess, let's go into the questions-- questions on the resos. So, on page 3, Reso 102. It's $264,000 for-- it looks like upgrades or some kind of security and software systems. But one of it is the computer-aided dispatch center, and the other one is for records management system. I'm just wondering, is there a split out of the $264,000 as to what goes to the dispatch center and what goes to records management? Only because I kind of keep track of the dispatch center and the costs that the county and the taxpayers are incurring. Number 103, $188,000. Roselle-- it looks like Roselle will be paying the county. And that's just for one year, $188,000 for police, fire, EMS dispatch. I'm just wondering, could somebody explain why it is so much? Because I recall the other contracts with the other towns were a lot less. I don't know some numbers. They're rather small. The page 4, Number 110. This is a reso for Remington and Vernick and Secaucus for purposes of redistricting and ongoing consulting services relates to the county election information. Now, this is a stranger, and only because Remington and Vernick are engineers, and I don't see how they could have any experience with county's election system unless you can explain that a little further. But something sounds very strange with this one. This one really needs to be cleared up. I have no other questions on the resos, but for general comments. You know, I look forward to being Chair-- Chair Williams. The time that you did step in when Chair Mirabella was out, you were well-spoken, polite, organized. So I actually look forward to this coming year with you as Chair. Don't know how long our honeymoon will be last, but whatever. So I look forward to the year. And for Commissioner Mirabella, I mean, you guided us through two years of pandemic, so I do appreciate your efforts on that and along with the rest of Commissioners and County Manager Oatman. The-- just an ongoing-- the budget cycles here. And, you know, my ongoing statements going back probably to 2016 is that, you know, we should be able to have a zero-tax increase because, I mean, we're sitting on who-knows-how-much-money now. We're sitting on, since the county jail is closed and Joe Amberjoppi, the County Clerk, mentioned that we're at record revenues from the real estate transactions. So, I mean, we're sitting on a lot of money. Before the revenue transaction, I mean, we were sitting on at least $100 million free cash. This is free cash I'm talking about. It shows up every year in the budget and the running fund total at the end. So I know it's free cash. And so, I keep asking for a zero-tax increase for all the towns. Commissioner Hudak, actually, last time I said it, he says, "Oh, well, we got equalized values." We can't do that. And he's wrong, because the equalized values are not our enemy. They are our friend. And I guess, let me just give you an overview of probably what you should do, and if-- and Chair Granados-- I mean, Commissioner Granados isn't here, unfortunately, but, I mean, I'll be glad to explain a little further. But all you have to do is take-- we have our base county tax from last year, and now you have the equalized value that obviously is going up or down depending on the towns. And you just take it on the last year's-- you know, the increases and decreases of the equalized value. You take it on the county tax collected from last year, and you'll see the ups and downs. Well, you take the largest increase of the change of equalized values this year, put it on to last year's county tax level, and whatever the largest increase is, that's all you have to do is just flip it around and deduct it from the county tax collection, and you should be able to break into a zero-tax impact. Of course, some will be-- the taxes may go down a little more for certain towns, but at least you'll be at zero or less. And I've been saying that for many years, and this is the first time, I guess, I had to explain it in a little more detail. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Are there any other members of the public who want to come forward? Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. Oh.
I have to answer a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Yeah. I actually did write notes. Okay. So, Mr. Patterson had questions on public safety, and he had one question for our elections administrator. So, Resolution 102, which the question was, how is that software cost split?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Mr. Patterson had questions on 102 and 3. I'll answer them both.
Okay.
Number 103, it's based on volume, the number of calls that affects the price. That's the variation between towns. For 102, he asked about the difference in the $264,000 between dispatch and upgrades, I guess, but I do not have that breakdown for you. I could talk to Director Moran and try to get you that answer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
And then, on Resolution 110, Ms. Dorado? The contract for Remington and Vernick?
Yes, ma'am. Through you, Madam Chair. The contract with Remington and Vernick was awarded through a fair and open process. They were pre-qualified both in 2021 and 2022 to provide GIS and population mapping services to the County of Union. They were provided with an RFP to submit a proposal, and of those, they were one of two who submitted. They were far more qualified than the other vendor to provide this service. They have extensive experience in rewording and redistricting. This is at least the third time that I'm aware of that they've done it for Union County, and they do provide districting services throughout the years that we are allowed to do it. In this year, following the 2020 census, they are performing this work for 12 counties in New Jersey. So they are respected statewide for this work.
Thank you, Ms. Dorado.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, GIS and mapping. Okay. I apologize, Mr. Patterson. It was not my intention not to have your questions answered. Just jumped the gun a little. Great. Okay. All right. So now, seeing no one else, I will close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2022-90 through 2022-118?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Vice Chair Hudak, seconded by Commissioner Baker. All right. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leone?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Okay. Thank you so much. And now, we'll have Commissioner reports and comments, and I will start to my far left. Commissioner Dr. Garretson?
Yes, thank you. So, this week, we had the pleasure-- or weekend, should I say-- to usher in Monday Martin Luther King Day. It was lovely to crisscross across the county and run into some of our Commissioner colleagues, but especially, I was able to listen to the program in Elizabeth, Plainfield, both religious programs, interfaith-type of programs, which were very, very inspiring. But it was also nice to be in the city of Raway with the Commissioner Baker and several colleagues. I'll let him talk a little bit more about that. But again, Martin Luther King Day is always such a wonderful day to reflect, recharge, and refocus. So it was great to be able to be with colleagues, but most importantly, see the community out and about to make sure that we continue the King legacy. I also just want to recognize that this has been such a challenging month for so many with the COVID variant. So I just ask everyone to continue to be vigilant, to continue to check in with your neighbors. So many people are experiencing such hardships during this time. So it is such an important time for us to be conscious and cognizant of what's going on around us. So I'm happy to see that we are taking the steps here to try to be healthier by having protective shields between us, but we also encourage everyone out there. So I look forward to a very protective year. Congratulations to our Madam Chair, Rebecca Williams, our Vice Chair, Christopher Hudak, and of course, welcoming onboard to the Commissioner Board, Commissioner Baker. I was not able to be here the last time due to, again, some exposure issues. Thank God, I was okay. But it's just never a good experience to have so much going on. So let's have a great year. I look forward to it, and those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Garretson. Commissioner Leone?
Yes, thank you. I just want to start by thanking the MLK Committee of Elizabeth. I had the pleasure of being invited and attended their 37th Annual Interface Service this past Monday in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, who made such a tremendous impact on our country and opened the doors to an entire generation for new beginnings. Let us continue to honor him by living our lives in unity, peace, and equality. In addition, for those people that are interested in a career in law enforcement, the Union County Sheriff's Office has opportunities available for qualified applicants. Sheriff's officers in New Jersey are chosen by a pool of applicants who take the law enforcement exam administered by the New Jersey Civil Service Commission. The exam is the start of a rigorous process by selecting candidates who achieve the highest standards at each step along the way. Speaking for the entire Commissioner Board and myself, we appreciate and respect the commitment to excellence and professionalism that is demonstrated by those successful candidates. The Civil Service Commission is currently accepting applications for the law enforcement exam until February 28, 2022. We'll have some more information soon. In the meantime, we encourage you to visit the Sheriff's Office online at ucnj.org/sheriff, where you can find information about eligibility and qualifications. And my last comment is, please, get the booster if you haven't gotten the booster yet. We're fighting this Omicron, and we just want everybody to stay safe and healthy. So just please get the booster or get the vaccine if you haven't gotten it. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leone. So, to my far right, Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to add my congratulations to our-- to you as taking on the responsibilities of Chair and to Vice Chair Hudak. And welcome, Commissioner Baker. Looking forward to a year serving with you and all the rest of the Commissioners. And again, kudos to everyone involved in commemorating Dr. King last week. I think there's a few more events coming up, and I look forward to February's events for Black History Month. I'm sure there will be a lot to do, and we will be attending wherever we can. So stay safe, everyone, and that ends my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be-- excuse me, I'll be brief. I did have the privilege and the honor of saying a few words at the City of Raway's Martin Luther-- Martin Luther King Day celebration. I do live in Raway, have lived in Raway for a long time, long time, and I've served on the City Council of Raway for 15 years. But Martin Luther King Day is, you know, is a day for, to, you know, pause and reflect upon this man's accomplishments and the effect that the civil rights movement has had on this country, and the principles and ideals that Martin Luther King expounded on and ultimately gave his life to. But it also kind of represents, you know, a unification of the country and of the people. Martin Luther King believed in America, felt very strongly about its ideals and its principles, and, like I said, he ultimately paid the, he paid the ultimate price for those ideals and principles. So I hope that everyone will continue to appreciate exactly what this man stood for, and live your days and your life accordingly, and, excuse me, and let's get, let's get this country moving in the right direction. And lastly, I am honored to serve on the Union County Board of Commissioners and hope to be able to continue to help this county grow and develop in a very positive way for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be a very rare opportunity to bank my time. At this time, I don't have any additional comments on what's been said previously. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. Let's see, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hudak?
Well-played, Commissioner Mirabella. Sternly, create a reserve, utilize it as you need to over the course of the year. Smart. Smart move for the first move.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Chair, on Wednesday, January 26, the Union County will host a free online event titled Financial Education Workshop for Special Needs Family at 6:00 PM. The event will be moderated by our colleague, Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded, and it will feature guidance from financial experts from the Mid-Atlantic Resource Group. They will discuss aspects of budgeting, estate planning, and other issues that are unique to households with special needs children. It can be difficult to prepare for financial contingencies under any circumstances, and households that have special needs children face additional obstacles. So we're very glad to provide this service. We hope this workshop will help parents and give caregivers sort and assist parents and caregivers as they sort through the estate planning process with reliable supportive guidance. To register, there is a Zoom link. Please visit the county website at theofficeonwomen@ucnj.org/women. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I just have a couple of things to add. COVID updates in Black History Month. As you all know, we have worked with many customers, with many partners throughout the pandemic to ensure that tests and vaccines are available to everyone who wants and needs them. But tonight, I'd like to thank the New Jersey Department of Health and Plainfield Mayor Adrian Mapp for setting up a testing site in Plainfield at the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, which is, for those of you who are not familiar, it's the former Unitarian Society of Plainfield, 724 Park Avenue. This new site is open to all Union County residents, and it's open six days a week. To make an appointment and to get information on all of our testing and vaccination services, visit ucnj.org, of course, or call 908-613-7829. I'm also happy to announce, and it was mentioned by a couple of my colleagues, that we will be hosting a number of events for Black History Month, beginning with the raising of the red, black, and green flag here at the courthouse in Elizabeth on Tuesday, February 1. And now, more than ever, it really is time for us to recommit ourselves to the future and also to honor and rediscover achievements and obstacles from the past and present. And Black History Month is a time for us all to do so. One of the highlights of our Black History Month celebrations this year will be a live performance of August Wilson's play, Fences, at the UC PAC Union County Performing Arts Center in Raway, beautiful city of Raway, on Friday, February 18. And stay tuned for our official announcement of this year's recipient of the Chester Holmes Humanitarian Award. Some of you may know that Chester Holmes was a longstanding freeholder in the County of Union from the city of Raway. In addition, there will be a virtual presentation by Professor Keith Walcott of Union County College entitled African American Survival: From Jim Crow to Civil Rights and Beyond. That is scheduled for February 24 at 6:30 PM via Zoom. So those links will also be available to you. And we will be announcing a number of additional events during the month. So please check our website and also our social media page and sites for updates on those events. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and for taking part in what is, I guess, our civic responsibility, attending meetings, asking questions. Those are always good things. And if there is nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are now adjourned.